I call this caucus to order. I'd like to thank our guests for joining us today. I know there's been quite a bit of talk in the news lately about stormwater. So we are going to have a presentation given to council on the proposed stormwater fee study. And then there'll be some questions from council and we'll take it from there. So we'll turn it over to you and we appreciate you coming in.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to cover a little background of what we did earlier in the part of this project developing stormwater program and budget. What we've been focused on more recently is the digitizing work where we determine amount of impervious surface in the city and then use that information to develop preliminary stormwater fees. And I'll share with you some preliminary concepts about a credit policy and what the intent behind that would be. And then finally, we'll close with just some of the next steps between going between here and actually issuing a stormwater fee at some point in the future. So just as a brief background, the city has a municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 system. This is separate from the combined sewer system that Pennsylvania American Water is responsible for. And it consists of, you know, over 130,000 feet of pipe and some of these other assets, inlets, outfalls, things within the city. That's sort of the primary focus of what this study is looking at, is making sure we can operate and maintain the separate storm sewer system correctly. The MS4 permit the city has, you know, requires, and this is an all permit, the permit deed to maintain adequate funding and staffing to implement the stormwater program. The city will be applying to renew this permit and this is a standard provision. So it's something that, you know, we're obligated when you have a storm sewer system is to actually have the funds to maintain it properly. We developed a five-year budget to, as a basis for the fee. So we first got to have a budget and you figure out we'll divide it by how many properties or payers to determine the rate. There's a number of assumptions that have been documented for how we developed this budget. One of the key things we have in here right now is there's an allowance of $100,000 a year for new best management practices. These are stormwater treatment facilities that would be required to be constructed under the Chesapeake Bay pollution reduction plan that has not yet been prepared. So that's sort of an assumption right now. The actual amount could be more or less as that plan is developed. So that's something the budget might need to be tweaked as this moves forward over The other thing just to note here is we've included rehabilitation of the storm sewer system equals about two and a half percent of the system a year. That's pipe replacement, one and a half percent, and pipelining, one percent. The condition of all the pipes in the ground isn't really known. It's not been proactively inspected historically and that's typical of every other storm sewer system in the state and the country. They, they very rarely are. But folks are starting to realize that 50-year-old corrugated metal pipe, those things we put in the ground, like, was starting to reach the end of their useful life. So we're looking at budgeting going forward, starting to take care of some of that infrastructure. This is just looking at those same budgets but over just the average of the first five years. Some of the transition costs initially gave the program a little high in year one and they will actually probably continue to reduce slightly after this first five years because that's biased a little high by the first year of the budgets. So you can see operation maintenance and MS4 permit requirements are the bulk of what we're doing there and then the administrative costs. Streets we've been leading collection are pretty much in line with what historical costs have been is what's budgeted here going forward. So that's the budget that's been developed. When we look at the rate structure, there were some goals in mind. One, keep it fair, reasonable, but also easily understandable so everybody can understand it and not spend an enormous amount of effort to administer a stormwater fee. So what we've come up with is a residential, so single-family residential properties via flat fee. This is similar to how the trash is billed. Non-residential and multifamily, like apartment complex or something like that would be based on the actual amount of impervious surface that there is on that property. So that has to be measured unique for each property in the city. And then undeveloped, sometimes we use the word vacant, which isn't probably perfectly accurate. It's really undeveloped or with less than 300 square feet of impervious surface. So if there's only a small shed, otherwise it's all green space, that would be no fee. So it's more or less, more or less in a natural state. So this residential rate structure, basically small properties pay the same as large properties. It's just put them all into one category. It's the most common rate structure. We look at some of the studies out there, naturewide studies of stormwater utility fees. Second most common would be a tiered type structure and we did look at that but, and weighed some pros and cons, but landed on working with administration and going with the residential rate structure that is a flat rate because it's, you know, it's simplest to explain, has the least likelihood of having appeals. We've seen in a lot of databases, the, some of the data that gets there from the deeded lot size versus what's in GIS and how the parcel boundaries are drawn, could be some slight discrepancies, which could ultimately result in somebody saying, you know, my, my lot isn't .26 acres, it's .24 and then that would put them into a different tier structure. So just in terms of effort to administer, explain, this is the simplest. And as I mentioned, to determine out what's the fee, what does somebody actually have to pay, we have to take the total cost and then divide it by the amount of impervious area, or we use the term equivalent residential units. So that's just looking at what's the average amount of impervious surface on a typical residential property in the city. And we've done a sample, I'll show you in a minute to make sure that's a representative sample throughout the city. And we can express all properties in terms of how many ERUs are you. So a large, you know, Home Depot type thing would have maybe 50 or 100 ERUs because they're that much, they're the size of that many houses. So they would pay, if they're 100 times the size, they would pay 100 times the fee. So in order to do that, we had to do some digitizing work. Sources of data we used were, after quite a bit of effort, we were able to obtain high resolution imagery from Lackawanna County that was done in January to April of 2017. So they flew over the city and produced some high resolution imagery. That was a leaf-off imagery, so it was, we were able to see better to the ground surface what, where the impervious surfaces were. Now keep in mind, any, any major development or any development that's occurred since then wouldn't have been captured imagery. So before going to actual final billing, we need to do a review of permits or certificates of occupancy just to pick up anything that maybe has happened since that, that date. On the peripheries of the city outside of the highly urbanized area, that, that, we didn't have that imagery and we used the publicly available imagery that's a little bit older, so like the Montage Mountain area and sort of areas that are outside of the highly urban, was, was not flown without high resolution. Then we got some data from the Lackawanna County provided parcel database and then building polygons, they actually already had digitized a majority of those. So a lot of our effort was done on the other impervious surfaces like parking lots and things in the city. So what we digitized was 10% of the single-family residential properties to get a sample, was 21,000 of them. 100% of the condos, not a lot of condos in the city. 100% of the non-residential multifamily or commercial properties, we sometimes call them. And then we broke out for no really good reason, the government properties were just identified separately. They're treated the same in terms of how we establish the rate and the fee structure and the billing. We got through about half of that when we prepared the study. The balance is being done because we have some funds left in the, in the project to finish that and that'll be included in, in the final, final billing. But we did make an estimate of what the total impervious surface was for all those properties when we did the fee analysis. So we don't really expect that to have much of an impact on the fee itself. The ERU size, the equivalent residential unit, is 2,717 square feet. So on average, a single-family residential property in the city has that much impervious surface associated with it. Then commercial properties range from just one up to 568 times that much impervious surface and government properties from one to 517. And 20 parcels since they have 200 or more ERUs. This is just a diagram showing that when we look at a property, we consider the primary billing as well as the driveway, any other hard surfaces, sidewalk things that are interior to the property to establish that and, and just shows the average of 2,717. When we look at the commercial properties, we, again, account for all the impervious surface, the buildings, the parking lots, other hard surfaces that don't infiltrate. And then we divide that by the 2,717 average for residential to say, well, how many equivalent ERUs does this commercial property have? In this example, 21,500 divided by 2,717 gives you 7.91, round that to eight ERUs. So they would pay the same as eight single-family residential properties. From Birds Eye View, this shows the digitizing work of the city. You can, as you expect, sort of the urban cores where we have buildings on the pavement and as you get further out, sometimes there's gravel, hard pack surfaces that interpretations, those are still impervious as we interpret the stormwater ordinance and those are picked up as well. So this just shows an example on the residential of when we have the digitizing, the red is the buildings, the blue is the other surfaces and green would be like hard gravel type surfaces. Similarly, through commercial areas, pick up the different buildings and types of impervious And this slide here has more detail than most people would care to know, but this just shows how many parcels of these different categories were, were digitized. And basically every type of parcel would, would get a fee. The exceptions are when we have the smaller condos, if there's common space that's privately owned like for parking, that was worked into the average amount of impervious surface per condo, so we're not charging a separate fee for that common space. And then there's, these vacant properties, which really for the purposes of this means it's undeveloped, has less than 300 square feet of impervious surface. It doesn't mean like an unoccupied structure. It means it's basically undeveloped is what it should probably say. So that, just, the main purpose is showing this backup to the ERU calculation. We take the, the total amount of impervious area for residential, divide it by the total number of parcels, that gives me 2,717. The reason I show you this is just to show it wasn't biased. We didn't look at just the small properties, we didn't look at just the big or the medium. We tried to get close to the 10% average pretty much on all the groupings to make sure it was a fair and representative sample of properties throughout the city. So when we went to the commercial listing, there was 300, 286 parcels, divide it by the number of, the 2,717 square feet per ERU and that says we have 29,179 gross ERUs. We assumed through a credit program, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, that we'd lose 15% of those ERUs or the revenue from 15% of those. So a credit is basically, if you already have a stormwater detention pond or something you had to build on your property, maybe you developed it recently and the current regulations require that, you can apply and get a credit for that because someone else has an older property, maybe didn't have that stormwater feature on their property. So it's, it's, it's a means of providing some equity for the fee. So anyway, we, we don't know exactly, it depends on how many people apply, if people go back and retrofit their properties to try and get credits, but we've allowed for 15% loss, which is relatively conservative. We tend to not see high participation in credit programs unless you go super generous with very high credits like Philadelphia has done. They give up to 80 or 90% credits on certain properties and we're, we're not looking at that at this point. So this shows just kind of the range of property sizes by owner. Added parcel is something, the, the database we, we got from the county actually had some holes in it, if you will, and some, some of the parcels didn't have owner information in it. So those got aggregated. So there were 65 properties and they add up to 583 ERUs, so there's got to be a little homework to make sure who are those and they get billed correctly. But it's, it's not likely one owner, it's going to be a bunch of different, different Similarly, what we call government, and you may debate whether some of these should have been called government or not, but we, we gathered together the parcels to our 74. We had a total amount of gross ERUs, 41.5. Again, assume we lose 15% of those to credits, adding another 34.89 ERUs to the denominator of the rate calculation. And, and this, this digitizing, like I said, was, was 46% completely, but we made it an estimate of the total amount that we included in here, so probably the number's pretty accurate. We are finishing that up and, and nearing completion of that just to, and we'll do a final check on that number.
Tony, if I can interrupt for one second, I'm over here. My mic's a little bit off. On the whole government issue, do, do those government, will they expect a bill or not get a bill or do we expect them to pay?
Um, I can't speak to whether anybody's expecting a bill at this moment, but to, to, from what I've seen and it's pretty consistent throughout stormwater programs, we treat it as a utility fee. So do they pay an electric bill, water bill, sewer bill, trash, you know, whatever. So it's, it's gas bill. So it's, it's pretty much everyone gets a bill.
Now historically though, in other cities that have this, are they paying that fee or are they ignoring the fee or how is that being handled?
Um, I-
For Lancaster, for example, I think has the fee in place. Do you know how they're handling that?
Yeah, I, I don't know Lancaster, who may have not paid. I know in Hamden Township, the latest I've heard is the, the federal government had not yet paid for a facility there, but I believe they were in communications to try and work that out as to what the fee should be, the amount of the fee. So-
So it's, it's fluid.
Yeah, I mean, so one of the things, when we have the 15% credit this summer here, we assume we're losing 4,993 ERUs to credits. I mean, some of that, in terms of budgeting, could be folks that just aren't paying. Although we do have a 95% collection rate assumed in the, in the rate calculation, so there's a 5% uncollectible there. So between those two numbers, there's certain things take a while to work out for certain individual payers and maybe it falls within that, that amount anyways, but wouldn't dramatically change the rate.
All right.
So when we add up those ERUs for the single-family residential and then the non-residential multifamily, which includes the, the government in there, we take 15% off of the non-residential, it ends up with 49,455 ERUs. When we look at how that's distributed, about 43% of those are from the residential, so the, the cost of stormwater program would be paid about 43% by the single-family residential properties as opposed to the commercial government non-residential properties. Doing about 57%. So we put all that information together, it's, we're, we're coming up with a rate of $8 per quarter for a single-family residential property. This shows the number of ERUs on the next line, that, that's the 49,455. So we take that times that, that $8 and that generates the total billed revenue. And then we have the revenue collected, budgeted expenses, that produces this debt revenue line. So at the end, did we, did we spend more or less than we took in? And then what is this sort of projected cash balance? And then we look at that sort of percent of the operating budget, you know, if you have two or three or four months of, of reserve in the bank from that fee. So this shows, under this, starting at the $8, we're able to hold a budget here of $8 for the five years, not showing rate increases. You can start with a lower number and then, you know, do rate increases every year if you want to, but most of our clients like to try and set up initial rate that we don't have to go into with a plan, already start raising rates, you know, in the early years. Based on a number of assumptions that I showed you earlier, collection rate, some of these questions will come up, the final fee, once, once, once it's issued, you know, we would expect to be in that $7 to $10 range. But if you change a couple of those assumptions, it may go up a little, down a little bit, wouldn't change it to, expect it to change dramatically. So when we look at how that shivers off, obviously, a, a residential property would be $8 a quarter, $32 a year. When you're looking at other properties like a gas station, maybe they have four ERUs or just from a mall, 105. So you can see that quarterly, rate's going maybe eight to 800 or more dollars per quarter. Now, how does this compare to others in Pennsylvania? This list is fairly complete, there may be one or two that we haven't picked up on, but the, the listing of communities on the left-hand side have flat residential rates as I was talking about, like there's not, every residential pays the same amount. And you can see they're, well, they're all more than $8. They, they range from 12 up to, what do you got, 40, 44 if you're looking at Philadelphia. On the right, there's some that use a tiered structure, which is based on the property size and you can see those, those ranging, well, on the lower end of the tiers might be in the $3 to $7 range up to, could be, you know, $37 a quarter there for, for Lancaster on that, that tier. They have a lower tier, but that's a lower rate, but at the tier, it's 2,000 to 3,000, which is where our average ERU falls, that would be what the rate would be for that size property.
So Tony, we're, so we're treating every residential property the same?
Yes.
Correct? So if we have a, a house that has a 3,000 square foot lot, somebody else has a lot that has a 20,000 square foot lot, we're, they're getting the same $32 fee theoretically?
Correct.
How difficult is it to implement a tiered system? Is it, is it more difficult? Is it not cost-effective or is there a reason why we didn't look at that more in depth?
Um, it, it can be done and other communities have done. So the only, the disadvantages of it are you have to make sure you have accurate data about everybody's size of their lot, which sounds pretty simple, but we've seen some of discrepancies in database. So there could be some appeals debating if, if we say under a quarter acres one size and over a quarter is another. Somebody says, well, I'm .249, I'm not .251 and then, you know, there's issue appeal. So some of those. But no, it can be done and we looked at. The other thing you find when we start doing tiers is, again, somebody who's one square foot bigger now goes into another tier, they may be paying 50% more than the other one or, or double depending on how we set that structure and some people might complain about that. But it does, it is, it is something that can be done and was looked at, but for the reasons of sort of simplicity, few appeals, easy to understand, and it's consistent with like how we build trash. If some family of eight might put out a lot more trash than if some, you know, home of one person, but I think they pay the same trash bill and some people did have sewers.
Let's not go down that road.
Okay, well, maybe it's about this.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I touched on credits. So as I mentioned, a credit policy is, most stormwater programs have credit policies and they're done for several different reasons. One is to provide a sense of equity. So again, if you have two commercial properties, the same size, restaurant, one was built last year, one was built 40 years ago, the same size parking lot, but the one that was built last year had to put in all these stormwater controls to meet current regulations and build an underground storage or detention basins, they should be able to apply for a credit because they are producing less stormwater runoff because of the facilities they have on site. So that's equity. The other thing is trying to incentivize properties maybe to do, go above and beyond. So properties that don't have to, they're not being developed or redeveloped, they could go do a retrofit BMP, best management practice on their property to, to receive a credit. Now, like I said, we haven't seen many of those. I've talked to Lancaster, Sotere Township, and Hammond Township and they have none of those BMP retrofits done. But their, their credit program is similar to what we're looking at here, it's mostly gearing towards equity. The only one that I know there's been lots of those is Philadelphia because they actually grant and credits and basically will pay for up to 100% of it if it's cheaper than what they have to do on the public side. So it's a, it's a very unique program that specializes as part of our CSO long-term control plan. But the basic concepts are it's no application fee, it's capped at the credits, it's 50%. So you can get up to 50% off if you have these onsite stormwater controls. And, you know, the policy can be monitored and adjusted over time. If we look at, say, we really want to try and get more public participation for retrofits, it can be tweaked, doesn't have to be locked in stone from day, day one.
How do we incentivize residential property owners though? Because I think we saw, we've seen this in the whole recycling issue where there really isn't an incentive for anybody to recycle in the city because there's no penalty, there's no incentive. We do it because it's the right thing to do. But if people want to get rain barrels, if they want to have a rain garden, if they want to have, you know, dig up the driveway and plant grass or whatever it might be, how do we incentivize them to do that if we don't have credits for residential property owners?
Right now, it would just be through public education if, if you wanted to make discounted or free rain barrels available, things like that, but the credit-
All right, so we can do things like that through grants and, and other types of-
Right, yeah, we haven't budgeted something specifically into this budget for a residential promotion of onsite stormwater management. That could be built in, a certain amount of dollars a year to dedicate to that effort. The credit program, we didn't look to that just because the effort to administer sort of audit and QA QC for something that's $8 a quarter just doesn't, the math just doesn't seem to, to justify, at least initially. But down the road, that's something that could be evaluated once we're kind of, program's up and running.
Thank you.
Tony, let's talk a little bit about the, the commercial credits, a little bit. Now, depending on how many ERUs this commercial property has, and it's like, it's a newer property, it, it holds its own water, there's no runoff, what would the process for credit be? Because I know that's a question that I've gotten asked quite often already, if there was going to be some kind of credit based on their newest facility that's going to hold their own water.
Right, there's, there'd be an application, there's a, there'll be a credit policy prepared that has an application form in the back that you have to fill out and say what kind of, I'll show you, so, you know, are you applying for rate controls or volume controls or, you know, typically we have a small credit available for schools that includes something in the curriculum about that's appropriate as part of the public outreach program. Fertilizer management, if, if somebody has an NPS industrial stormwater permit, industrial permit, all these things, they have to check the box of what it is and provide some required information in order to get that credit. And then there's typically an annual report that they have to just say, yes, I'm maintaining it, whatnot, you know, I'm complying with, if there's an O&M agreement for that with the city. And then the city can, as, or the authority, as, so chooses to go out and audit those periodically just to make sure if they say they're maintaining, that they're actually maintaining those facilities. So, so this just sort of shows the types of credits that we're, we're looking at on a preliminary basis and the credit manual would have some details about each of these, what needs to be done to satisfy the credit requirements. So that covers the, everything I really wanted to, to get to, just have the sort of next steps I'll just run through. Where, where do you go from here? We're looking at exploring regional authority, there's been some discussion with some of the other communities around, want to participate through either the city's program or countywide program. Bernie McGirl works with us and you may know is helping try and put that together. Then, once that decision's made, you need to make a decision approved and then go ahead and set up a stormwater authority, finalize the digitizing, which we're doing right, right now. And then creating a billing database, that's taking all the information out of GIS and like I said, where there's some holes in there, we don't know who the owner is, checking for any developments occurred in last year, update that. Then any additional public outreach, just to make sure the community understands what's coming. Finalizing the credit policy so it's ready to be available for folks to apply for credits. Finally, adopt a rate resolution, once we nail down the final rate at the very end and then update the billing system and then you issue, and, you know, go on with issuing invoices at that time.
Two things I- Before we take questions from council, I know Senator Blake is here, if you'd like to, to say a few words as well before we, before we take questions from council. I know you've been very active in learning about regionalization on these, these items. So if you have anything that you'd like to add before we-
Thank you, Councilman. I, I'm here really on the invitation of the mayor and the business administrator, but also offered to come, quite simply because I want to, to the extent that it's appropriate and necessary, be a convener of people around this issue. I'm, I am persuaded, I am persuaded that taking a regional approach to stormwater management has two definitive effects. It reduces the capital obligations of the municipality, the individual municipality, and reduces the fees and the rates for all rate payers. I'm, I'm just persuaded by that argument. Now, I commend the city because you're, you're ahead of most municipalities I represent. Not every municipality that I represent in the 22nd district is, is considered an MS4 community. I have communities that don't have any infrastructure whatsoever in rural parts of the county, parts of North Pocono actually don't drain into the Suspana River watershed, they drain into the Delaware, so they wouldn't be caught up in this, you know, requirement, if you will. And I think we need to be thoughtful about an approach to a regional authority. Now, I'm saying this without having had the opportunity to get an awful lot of people in the same room or to gauge their interest or to understand whether they understand the consequence of not doing it that way. I think the more you concentrate costs, the harder it is for a municipality to comply. But I think there's a whole pile of education that has to go on here because we're nowhere near a solution set despite the, the value of this analysis. Because it will, it will always inform the next step and additional analysis that has to be done. What I think is important for people to know is why we are having this conversation. Because it wasn't a state law that caused this conversation. This conversation began in 1983 when then-Governor Dick Thornburg engaged in a compact with West Virginia, I believe Delaware and Washington DC entered into a multi-state compact because there was an acknowledgement of the erosion of water quality in the Suspana River watershed. So behind my house runs Ellsworth Creek- So behind my house runs Ellsworth Creek, Ellsworth Creek runs into Lackawanna River, Lackawanna River runs into the Susquehanna, Susquehanna dumps into the Chesapeake. So we're not talking about water quality there, even though we are, but we're also talking about water quality right here. Okay? So that's the reason that we are dealing with this, because once the compact was signed, and New York, New Jersey came on some years later, because they're at the headwaters of the Susquehanna, that compact was turned over to the Environmental Protection Agency at the federal level to be administered by EPA. Okay, so this is back in 1983. There have been efforts, as you've seen here on the screen across the state where different communities have done things to try to get into compliance. They've set up authorities, they have set up, you know, they've done the analysis, and they are already in the midst of this. However, here in northeastern Pennsylvania, we're a little bit behind. We really are. And there's a sense of urgency as we get closer to the deadlines that the EPA and DEP are acknowledging are necessary to meet. So that's why this is newsworthy now. That's why we're having this conversation, because it's kind of coming home to roost a little bit. Noncompliance, noncompliance is a danger to the fiscal health of the community, because fines could be living by EPA and by DEP. So I think we need to understand that despite the fact that we've wished that this can go away, despite the fact that court cases have been brought to try to eliminate the requirements for compliance, none of that has worked. This isn't going away, it's an issue that has to be taken up. And listen, at the end of the day, I don't think anybody in this room is going to argue about the fact that the kind of rain that we had last year and the kind of threat it poses to neighborhoods is real, and that we need to be mindful of where those dangers are, and we need to be in a position to pinpoint them and hopefully take care of them. Now, the last thing I want to say, which is the most important thing I probably will say, is that the federal mandate, if you want to call it an unfunded federal mandate, it kind of fits that, you know, that description. But the reality of it is that the federal government, the state government, needs to be a better partner with local government, because 80% of the cost that anybody is going to get in this space is capital infrastructure investment, to separate out lines, to upgrade old infrastructure, to deal with the capital investment that's necessary to guarantee a sustainable system that protects the community. We in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania do have some resources we can bring to bear, to help assist this city or a regional authority, if that's what we construct, to meet those capital needs that are going to be intensive. But we are not there right now in terms of the scale of investment that we know it's going to take. So I come back around on that point to the fact that a regional authority makes sense if we can reduce the capital cost to individual municipalities, and then reduce the rates to the citizens that we represent. And I think that there's value and merit in looking at that, engaging in dialogue on it, bringing people in, educating people on the responsibilities, understanding how each of the communities that may be affected know what challenges at their own doorstep. Because until they have a reckoning with that, then I don't think they're going to understand the value of a regional authority. The last thing I need to do is to commend the city. And the reason I'm going to do this is because, you know, the city, I think, recognized that they were going to be facing enormous spikes in the financial pressure on your citizens, on your ratepayers and Dunmore, with respect to the authority, because the authority owned this responsibility. If you did not do what you did in the transaction, that, the weight of all of that, the weight of all of that would have been on your citizens and on Dunmore citizens. When Pennsylvania American Water agreed and the transaction occurred for the sewer authority, they can spread the cost of compliance within what they own to their entire customer base. That, in my opinion, made it predictable, made it more predictable for the ratepayers of the city of Scranton and the city of, and borough of Dunmore. But, but the reason that we're here, and what this gentleman has been studying, is what they didn't buy. 130,000 linear feet of stormwater management that still exists within your jurisdiction, and that still must come into compliance with these federal requirements. So I'm only here because I want to be a good partner and make sure that the state is a good partner in protecting the people we represent in common, and hopefully protecting the fiscal health of the communities I represent.
Thank you very much, Senator. We appreciate your comments, and one point you made that I really want to hammer home, because I know the headline tomorrow is going to say Scranton considers stormwater fee, or it's going to say Scranton in the article. This is not something that's unique to Scranton. As the Senator mentioned, and I prefer to say that it's an unfunded mandate as well from the federal government, I know the Luzerne County has had a lot of attention on this issue as well. All the communities surrounding Scranton, for the most part, that are in the watershed, are going to have to comply with these same regulations that the city does. And one of the misconceptions that some people have mentioned when talking about this was they think it has something to do with the sale of the sewer authority. This was coming either way, and as was mentioned, by doing the transaction, was actually able to lessen the cost on the residents for the, specifically for the stormwater portion. So I just want to home to those points. I know I cut off Councilman Evans, he had a question, so we'll turn it back over to you, and then if any of my colleagues have other questions as well.
Couple of quick points. Thank you very much for your comments. As you mentioned, we're way ahead of all, if not many, of the communities surrounding us in this venture. And we're moving ahead, but we want to be partners in a regional approach if we can.
Understood.
So I think time is of the essence to have those conversations and discussions, because, and maybe Mr. Bolzoni could speak to this, we have an RFP in front of us that's going to be opened on April 12th for an engineering study, which is actually the next phase of what we're doing. So that's important. But the regional approach has to be part of that. And we need to get it done, because we need to know what our infrastructure is, we need to prepare for our MS4 application again to renew it. But we need to continue to move ahead. So we need to get-
I think everybody has to come in eyes wide open. I think, again, you guys are making decisions that have to be made, because you have no choice but to keep walking down this road toward compliance, and I commend you for that. But I think as long as the opportunity is on the table for wider discussion and some additional engagement, additional education, additional information being exchanged, that door is still open to us, and we should at least approach it and see what we can come away with. And if things don't work out, well, then you're right smack dab where you are right now, and you're still going to be moving down that road toward compliance. But I do think there's some value in looking at this across a larger, a larger region, only because water doesn't respect municipal borders, and we want to protect the people we represent in common. So it's worthwhile to have that discussion.
I totally agree. You know, we have an opportunity to have that discussion, and I think we have to take that opportunity to do it. Mr. Bolzoni, if you can for one second, explain a little bit what this stormwater RFP will accomplish as far as the city's concerned, and how that moves us one step closer.
Well, I think the easiest way to understand it is just to look at this last slide presentation. So in parallel, you've got two very important considerations relative to next steps. What's noted here is the renewal of the MS4 permit application. That's due this year. Obviously, a significant component of that is compliance with the Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction plan. So continuing to move forward, we have certain requirements anyway. So regardless of the consequences relative to the formation of the authority, we have requirements just relative to the renewal of the application. But it presents a very good opportunity for us. Tony and Arcadis have put together an excellent presentation, gives us an excellent foundation in order to really be able to look more closely at the regional concept. That's built into the RFQ as well. So we're seeking an engineering firm that could really take us to the next step, which would be theoretically, creation of authority, hopefully the creation of a regional authority, but also some pretty significant tasks relative to the renewal of the MS4 permit.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I do, quickly. I mean, I'm obviously a proponent for the regional authority. Anytime I think we can get a bigger pool of people in the game, that's going to keep costs low. Thank you for the presentation. It was a great presentation, but I want to ask this question to Mr. Bolzoni. How comfortable are you with these projections? I believe, was it 100, 1.44 million a year? That's going to be our budget, our estimated budget for stormwater? Is that what I saw?
Yes, that was the average.
And that money's going to be generated by the eight ERUs per quarter?
Yeah, $8 per year.
Right, okay. So, and that kind of adds up, and that's going to give us, put us in the right ballpark to manage our stormwater? I mean, obviously, within, you know, manageable variance, but that's something that you're comfortable with as of right now with the plan as you see it?
Well, a point that I've made previously is, this is a preliminary analysis. The actual end result may look somewhat different, but we also thought it was very important that a range is built in relative to what the fee might be. Because conceptually, and I think the data is very valid, and again, going back to the fact that it's an excellent presentation, it gives us a strong foundation to work from. Some of the components may look a little bit different. So if the components look a little bit different, the budget's going to look a little bit different. But again, the fact that a range was inserted in there gives us, I think, a lot of validity to the presentation and how the budget may actually wind up looking. So I think there's some variables in there that we'd want to work with, but generally, this is an excellent start, and I think the budget is a very good foundation to work from.
And then just finally, now, you know, the Chesapeake Bay agreement, obviously, that's what we're here for. That's the importance of it. Clean water is our lifeblood of this planet. I don't think anybody's going to disagree with that. And $8 a quarter does seem rather nominal for the benefit that we're going to get for that. But, you know, it begs the question, in a city that's already feeed and taxed a lot, enacting a new fee, you know, is sometime a bitter pill to swallow. And while it is nominal and is important, I just want to make sure the city's done everything possible to keep that fee as low as possible and absorb whatever we could from taxes and fees we're already collecting. Is that something that we've taken a look at to make sure that we're just not putting another fee on top of the other fees and taxes that we already generate? Because it's a slippery slope. Once we enact a fee, it never comes off, and that kind of sets the precedent. If there's another initiative that comes down, you know, will that generate another fee? So that's kind of, that's my concern, and that's some things that I've been talking about in hearing, is, you know, no one wants a new fee when they're already getting taxed and fee. So I want to make sure as a city that we're just doing everything we possibly could to keep that as low as possible and absorb as much as we could without paying it forward.
A point that I'll make is remember, your distribution is across a fairly wide geographic base. That's not necessarily something that you can attest to with regard to real estate taxes. So you'd have to face that concept if you brought it onto your own balance sheet, trying to undertake these projects in-house.
Sure.
So again, it's part of the consideration.
That is a good point. And what a lot of people, I think Senator Blake, you talked about the education piece of this, and there is immense education that we need to do. This is going to cover a broad scope of properties within the city, cities that don't normally pay a fee, you know, nonprofits, any impervial surface, that's going to take the hit. And I think you had the chart up there where, you know, $825, I think the number was, you know, based on the amount of ERUs for, you know, a shopping center. And that will definitely help keep the individual costs down. And again, I did say, you know, $8 a quarter's nominal, and what we get for that, for the clean water, is definitely worth it. I'm not arguing that point. It's just anytime we enact a new fee, I just want to make sure we're just not doing it to do it all. We're doing our due diligence as government officials to make sure we're not just passing that out without doing what we have to do to keep that as low as possible, I guess is what I would say.
Councilman, I echo your sentiments, and I think we really need to take great care in understanding how best to get to the very best place for all the people we represent, and, and the business community. And because the reality of it is, if I, and I don't, I'm not speaking out of turn, if you were to take the MS4 communities in Lackawanna County that are in proximity to the city, 50% of the ratepayers are inside your boundary. The other 50% are just outside. So it's like, it's like taking one population that's going to be paying $8 a quarter, and adding in a whole other city of Scranton, right? And maybe that comes down to $4 a quarter. I mean, wouldn't that be wise for the people that have to pay it? Right? And I also think, because the nonprofits have to pay it, because the business community has to pay it, because even per your comments earlier, Councilman Evans, even governmental entities might have a responsibility, sometimes municipal authorities or whatever have to pay. Those costs are being spread equitably, it seems, across the entire footprint, right? And I think in some experiences and other, and maybe Tony knows this as good as anyone, I believe half that burden actually ends up being paid by non-residential payers. Is that reasonable?
53%.
Yeah, I think we were looking at about, forty-three, forty-six percent. Yeah, but it's typically a little less than that. So about 43% of the residential-
Forty-three percent. We have to be, and that's why those credits are important, because we have to be sensitive to good practices that the business community may have already taken up or will take up. We have to keep those, keep those folks in mind, too.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I do. First, I just want to thank Senator Blake for taking leadership on this issue. I can't agree with you more. I mean, we're stronger together than we are separated, especially when it comes to stormwater. Mr. Bolzoni, it's important to point out that we also have to get, work with PA American Water to figure out when they'll be switching over the combined system to a separated system, correct?
Well, it's correct.
Because at some point, they're going to do it, and that's going to affect what we're responsible for.
There's an interaction between the city and Pennsylvania and water that's going to require further discussion. No question about that.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out, because that wasn't on one of the next steps. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yes. How do you think municipalities' progress towards meeting stormwater goals will be measured by state officials? I think you mentioned it earlier. It seems like, in some of the research I've done, over time, the regulations keep on changing. It seems like the target keeps moving. So I'm looking more at what's the end game here? Like, what does success look like, even if we take it all past 2023? I don't know if anybody wants to answer that.
Well, the Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction plan that the city has to prepare as part of its permit renewal application will have specific pollutant reduction amounts, because we'll determine a baseline pollutant loading, how much nitrogen and phosphorus sediment runs on the city, will be a percent removal that's required. That turns a certain amount of pounds a year, that turns a certain amount of projects to achieve. Those projects will be identified, put on a schedule, and then it'll be an obligation to implement those projects, or comparable projects, if one of those hits a roadblock for some reason, to achieve that pollutant reduction. I think that's from the regulatory perspective, what they would be looking at to assure compliance with the permit going forward. And there's some other, you know, public outreach type things that require the permit, good housekeeping and whatnot. But that's probably the key thing. I can't really speak to whether five years from now, or 10 years from now, if they look at the health of the Chesapeake Bay, might they try and ratchet things down further? I don't know. That's beyond my crystal ball to be able to say. But, you know, at least from what we know now, I don't, you know, we can see that as highly likely in the near term.
Councilman, my only comment on this is that I can promise you that your elected representation will keep a close eye, at least on the state regulators, because we want there to be complete predictability, and we don't want to be making decisions that are going to be undermined by a subsequent regulatory action on the part of DEP. So that's within our purview as lawmakers, to take a look at what they're doing and why they're doing it and how they're doing it, and to guarantee that they're at least being consistent on a statewide basis, district by, or region by region by region. So we will be vigilant if they start moving the end zone line.
When you had the slide up with the, kind of, the next steps, I don't know, can you put like a timeline, a timetable on that? Like, what, month-wise, year-wise, what are we looking at when we're talking about approving and setting up the stormwater authority, public outreach, so on and so forth? Like, is this in a matter of months, or is this next year? What do we, what does a timeline look like?
Well, I think, number one dictates a timeline. And right now, that's generally an unknown. So if we start to realize some participation, some general interest in the regional authority, then allows us to move down that path with more diligence. So I think we really have to wait to see what kind of interest is generated in the regional authority. That will then determine the timeline. So I think we have certain expectations as to how we might be able to progress with this. And there are certain requirements, too. As Tony pointed out, you know, we have requirements relative to pollution reduction. So we have to undertake this anyway. So even if we think that the regional authority concept may be delayed, we still have to continue to pursue- have to continue to pursue some of the reduction components that are required within the permit. So that's not a direct answer to your question, but really, number one is going to determine what that timeline is going to be.
And let me just comment. I, I invited several, as I do every year, after the governor's budget address, invite to a legislative breakfast, and I invited several. I probably had 100 different local government officials in the room for that presentation. And I did introduce this concept publicly to see what kind of feedback I would get. And surprisingly, anywhere from six to eight communities said, yeah, you know, if you're going to set up a task force around this, I think this might be something we'd like to be part of. But, but the urgency is to convene and communicate and gauge that, because at the end of the day, a new authority has to be established, whether that authority is yours alone or the municipalities alone, as they must pursue compliance just as you do, or if it's a new authority. Because we don't, if I want to draw a distinction between what I think happened in Luzerne County, you had an existing authority that decided to step up into this role. I don't think we have that here. I think that we are in fact going to have to establish a new authority. How that is configured, how it is governed, what it looks like, is a complete unknown to us even now. So, but I think dialogue around it, education, using the value of some of your, of your professional engagement here to inform other local officials about what they might, what road we might be able to go down together. And I'll do the best I can to make that timeline. You know, when we get to that fork in the road, we'll know, we think this is the best way to go, or no, we're not comfortable with that, we think this is the way we have to go. I'm going to try to shorten that timeline as best as I can with the help of the folks I represent that represent, you know, local government in Lackawanna County.
If I can comment on the timeline issue for one second. To me, time is of the essence. We saw with the weather last year, we have a broken system right now. We're not capable of handling our stormwater situation on our own. So we have to move regionally, or we have to move alone. We have to move. So hopefully, we can get this thing going as quickly as possible, get the discussions going with the regional approach first, find out where that leads us. Hopefully, it leads us to, a lot of people want to join in with us, and we can all be better off for it. If not, then we need to move ahead.
Understood, Councilman.
I just want to make one comment, too. I just read, there was actually an article in the Citizen Voice today. There's a state representative from Kingston, Aaron Koffer. He has sent a letter to the Attorney General asking him to file an injunction with the federal government and the EPA, because he's claiming that the Chesapeake Bay reduction plan by, and the unfunded mandate that we've talked about today could possibly violate the Federal Unfunded Mandates Reform Act of 1995. And I think Councilman Robyn mentioned kind of the outcry down in Luzerne County. So is there, would you be amenable to any effort if Lackawanna and Luzerne County kind of got together? Is that a possibility to go to the federal government, to our congressmen and our senators and say, you know, this is inherently unfair, and we're not going to be able to put this on the backs of, you know, our residents? Or is that not...
Councilman, it's not for me to, I mean, I would never dissuade local elected officials from engaging their congressional delegation. The only anecdotal thing I'd like to offer to you is, I believe that this has already been challenged in court. And I believe that we, we haven't been able to get the courts to side with the argument outside of, no, the compact has been done, the compliance regulations are promulgated, you know, you have this amount of time to comply. We haven't been able to get out from underneath that responsibility from, in the courts. Now, I don't know the basis for this new challenge, or whether it is related to any previous one. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure that it'll be disposed of readily, but right now, you know, even after everything that's happened, after all the attempts that we've made to try to get out from underneath this, we're underneath it still. We haven't been able to sneak out. And I think, again, I hope people begin to understand that it's, it's really about public safety, because flooding events that, that can really threaten our citizens and their property and their livelihoods, you know, these are things that could only be addressed in a meaningful, strategic manner over time by establishing an authority that wakes up every day dealing with. So I just think we're, you know, I think there have been several attempts made, including going to the courts to try to, to try to get the federal EPA regulatory administrator for this compact to back away, and they, the courts have not told them to back away.
And we appreciate everyone coming in. We've already gone about 10, 15 minutes over on time. So again, we thank everyone for coming in. Council's going to take a quick five-minute recess, and then we'll begin our regular meeting in about five minutes. So this is the first of many discussions on this issue. Thank you.